I'd like to call to order the November 19th, 2018, meeting of the Highland Park Board of Education. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of the public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the Highland Park Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting, setting forth the time, date, and location to be submitted for publication to the Home News Tribune and Star Ledger and posted on the board's website at least 48 hours in advance of this meeting. Members of the public who wish to address the board will be given the opportunity to do so before the board adjourns for the evening. Lynda, can we please have a roll call?
Ms. Byer?
Here.
Ms. Simorusti?
Here.
Ms. Coleman? Ms. Gowan? Mr. Krieger?
Here.
Mr. Magaziner? Ms. McFerrin-Din Nicola?
Here.
Ms. Pietrobono? Mr. Roslevich?
Here.
Be it resolved pursuant to the Sunshine Act NJSA 10-4-12 and 13, the Highland Park Board of Education will now meet in closed session to discuss litigation matters. These exemptions are permitted to be discussed in closed session in accordance with NJSA 10-4-13. Information regarding the board's closed session discussion will be disclosed to the public as soon as the need for confidentiality no longer exists. Can I get a motion to recess to closed session?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can I get a motion to reconvene to public session?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And can we please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
(inaudible)
Okay, Lynda, are there any other communications? We don't have any communications on the agenda. Is there anything else?
No.
Okay. And then number eight on our agenda is the correction to the minutes from the October 15th, 2018 meeting. There was a couple of changes under personnel. And that was it. Can I just do eight and nine together? Yeah. And then there's the -- number nine is the approval of minutes from the October 8th meeting for both the regular -- for the regular public session meetings from October 15th and I'm sorry, workshop and executive session from October 8th. Can I get a motion to move items eight and nine?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on those items? No? Okay, seeing none, Lynda, can we please have a roll call?
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Ms. Simorusti?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFerrin-Din Nicola?
Yes.
Ms. Pietrobono?
Yes.
Mr. Roslevich?
Yes.
All right, wonderful. So that brings us to our student report. Hello, students.
Hello. Okay, so this week's report isn't that long. So Highland Park High School will be competing in a Battle of the Books competition on February 13th, 2019, at Middlesex County College. Among the 25 teams competing, five counties are represented to include Middlesex, Hunterdon, Bergen, Passaic, and Warren. Nine selected books by the librarians have been a hit among the students, and at this time, students are reading and fundraising for the trip in February. This has been a great year of student participation. Highland Park left three teams, the maximum amount, attending the competition. Mrs. Pucciolo has been very pleased with the turnout and the enthusiasm among the students. Also, the past Friday, Saturday, Sunday, were the fall drama performances of the Laramie Project. Those were all a success, and everyone had a great time. And so this Wednesday for the high school service day, it's when we do -- different clubs host different volunteering activities and opportunities for the students, and the students all participate, and report cards also come out that day, so yay.
Yay.
The high school is also having a blood drive as part of the service day next week, on the 29th. Next week, the Model UN team is going to Rutgers Model United Nations Conference, so we'll look forward to that.
And also, all students are excited for Thanksgiving break.
Well, I'm glad to hear there was equal excitement for report cards and break. It's good that you're balanced that way. Okay, that's everything? Okay. Thank you very much. So that brings us to Dr. Taylor's report.
I'm very grateful to see we have visitors, including Ms. Brady, who came to join us for this evening's recognition of a special student who I've come to know quite well too, since he was a Bartle. And because I am a father of theater kids, and Andrew is a tech extraordinaire, I've gotten to know him well that way as well. So I would like to introduce Ms. Brady and Ms. Osemia. If you could please come to the podium and talk a little bit about the student we're spotlighting tonight.
I think that in the hustle and the bustle of everything that's going on within the schools, it is a wonderful opportunity to be able to come and speak to the everyday heroes that we have walking our hallways. I have tonight, and I'm going to introduce him and I want him to stand here, Mr. Andrew Dalton, who is the unofficial mayor of our school. And so why do I say this? When you think of Andrew, besides the tech that he does for the Laramie Project, which just was an amazing show that just happened, and he organizes all of this, he is a guide for any new student that comes into the school. So if we need someone to tour a new student, this is the face of what -- because he knows everything about the school, every nuance that he can speak to, and he knows everything. Last year, we needed a video for the Moving Up Ceremony, and we were trying to get some of the kids to organize it, but he decided that he was going to take it upon himself to kind of gather the information and make the video, so he did that, and so we had a video extraordinaire that I hope for the next two years we'll be able to get from him. He's just an organizer, a mover, an advocate. So he is going to be one day in, you know, he's going to be on the news, and his name, he'll be one of those commentators for CNN, because he does everything. So he joined this Plastic Free Town movement, right? And he started it, sorry, as his part of Be the Change Project. So he innovates things, he thinks about what the needs are. So he came up to me, what was, like, two weeks ago? Yeah. And he says, "Ms. O, I'm thinking about doing this terricycle recycling, so you put wrappers inside this, and then we can reuse this. What do you think?" And so, you know, I do what he says. I said, "Let's do it. Get a box, and we'll put this on it." And so every day, he goes, and these are collected, and what do you use this for? Melted down and reused. So, I mean, he's always thinking about something to do. So when you see these here, and look, he gets good business every day. Sustainable New Jersey, he's part of the Sustainable Highland Park Environmental Initiatives, and he's very active in that. Not only that, but for the Be the Change, for the night of back-to-school night, he went up to one of the teachers and said, "I'd like to do your presentation for you. So let me speak to the projects that you do in sixth grade for Ms. Feringo," and he said, "I'll be your spokesperson." So he does this, and she's like, "Sure, go ahead." And so she got the best review she's ever gotten from back-to-school nights, because this young man talked about the Be the Change Project, as well as the project-based learning class that he's a part of. He does the announcements, and he helps new people when they're coming in to do the announcements in the school. And he's such a friendly and helpful person, and his smile is infectious, and so is his personality. Also, for ori -- I just have to keep reading the list, because there's so many things. For orientation, he was one of the people that did the orientation. So he's independent, he's personable, he's genuine, he perseveres, he's passionate, he's an advocate, and he's just my hero. And I love having you here, and you are just -- you know how that light of education shines? You're one of the filaments in that light bulb, so I love, love, love having you here. But I'm going to be quiet now, because I'm going to give Ms. Brady the opportunity to talk and rave about everything that you do.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So when I heard that Andrew had -- was nominated and had gotten this award, I was beyond thrilled. There is really no better person, no more deserving person than you who should receive this award, Andrew. When I came back from my first maternity leave, Andrew was a sixth grader, and he called me over, and I didn't know him, you know, from anybody, and he said, "You know, I wanted to introduce you to this caterpillar. Her name is Ms. Brady." I said, "Mom." And he said, "She wears a big bun, and you can identify her very easily, because even though she's very small, she wears a big bun, just like you do." I said, "What is --"
Something.
I said, "Who is this kid? Who is this?" And it was Andrew. And since then, we have just become these kind of odd, this odd couple, Andrew and I. I don't know how else to say it. When I left for this maternity leave, I sent out an email to the staff saying, you know, "You're in good hands, everything will be fine, and if you have any questions, ask Andrew." And I meant that, because he knows every single person, every single thing. He was a tremendous help in organizing my office as part of the Student Support Center. I could not have done it without him. I don't know anything, you know, about Feng Shui. These two would have helped in creating that, so I credit them both. Like Ms. O said, he did the video for the eighth grade Moving Up Ceremony. He was asked to present as part of the Plastic Free Town Initiative to present at the high school Eco Fest. As a sixth grader, I thought that was unbelievably cool. It was unbelievably cool. He's making phone calls to Mr. Krueger, his friend, you know, and I said, "How do you even know -- how do you know this?" But he knows everybody. And the last bit of good news that I got from him while I've been out was that he was asked to do a TED Talk.
Stop!
Yeah! So I said, "Can you get me in? Can you get me in?" He said, "I don't know. I don't know if I can get you." I said, "Oh, my gosh." So, like I said, there is really no one who is more deserving of this award, and I am just honored to be here to speak on his behalf. And I miss him. I really have to say that. While I'm out, I really do. So I know he's hanging in, I know he's running the show, and I just -- you're awesome, my friend. You're awesome. Well done.
He's missed a personality. He really is. He's really missed a personality. I was talking to him before our practice session. He's amazing. Just unflappable.
Thank you.
He's seven. Yeah. He's 12. Yeah, I was talking to him. That was so cool that he's wearing --
Bye, guys. I have to say, I'm feeling like an underachiever all of a sudden. I don't know. TED Talk. That's incredible.
So that's the entirety of my report tonight.
All righty.
I pass it back to you.
Wonderful. So we will move on to our board committee reports, and just as a reminder, this is our voting session. Last week, we had our workshop session, so everything on the agenda, with the exception of anything that's in bold, we went over at last week's meeting. So for any of the committee chairs, you can really just, unless you have a new report, we don't have to go through everything item by item just to save time. You can just go over anything that's bolded on the agenda, or if you guys have, if your committee has met since our last meeting. But otherwise, we can just kind of zoom through our committee reports. So with that, I will start with Michelle, the curriculum and instruction.
Yes, it doesn't look like there's anything new from last week. There is number two, the approval of the number of agreement -- of agreement between the Highland Park Public Schools and the Zone 16 Center. So that's worth reading through. I'm not going to do that out loud, because people will see that. And then the curriculum writing for ELA grades K through 12, including APGUF, as well as language composition, Chinese I, Chinese II, the language of film, structured learning experience, and community-based instruction. Number four is the graduate students and internships for both the library science in the high school and the department of learning and teaching in the high school. That's the Chinese teacher. Okay, so that's it.
All right. Awesome. Does anybody have any questions for Michelle or Scott on anything on the curriculum agenda? The only thing I wanted to clarify is, we had a little bit of a discussion last week about the agreement with the Zone 16 Center. What's on here is just kind of formalizing that relationship, but it doesn't have anything to do with what we talked about last week, which was, are we going to enter into some sort of agreement where there could be a sharing of student information? That's a total separate aside issue, right?
Correct.
Okay. So I just wanted to make sure that we were clear about that, that this is just kind of establishing that relationship, but we're not authorizing any kind of exchange of information at this point.
Not that I know of.
Great.
And I feel like that conversation has yet to be had, but I just wanted to mention that, like, the library is also a place that would, you know, we would set precedent for places like that as well, so we should keep that in mind.
Yeah, excellent point.
Can I interject with that? I don't want to get into a long discussion, but do we have such an agreement with the library? Is there any sort of formal agreement between the school and the library?
No. No.
I mean, I agree, that might be something to take into account, might sort of encourage parties to work together, you know, more intentionally.
Yeah.
It's something I can task Rebecca Fittipaldi, who's the liaison, to address.
Yeah.
I would love to see that happen. I think that that's a place where --
I think you need to get closer to your mic.
Oh. I don't want to, like, take it off the mic. Good evening. I feel like that's a place where kids hang out just as much as the teen center will be, and many of the middle school students that would not really qualify, I think, for the teen center, right?
I think the middle school students, I think they're setting aside one day at the Zone 16.
Right. So, yeah, the library is a place where, because we don't have an after-school program, after-care, in the middle school, a lot of the kids go to the library, so that's a good point, Ann, I think we need to look into that.
And I know there's always a little bit of tension between the goals of students and the goals of the library, and maybe we could sort of harmonize those in some way. So thank you, Scott, for mentioning that to Rebecca.
Okay. So if there's nothing else on curriculum and instruction, we will move on to finance with Mr. Krieger.
Thank you. Thank you, Darcy. So we have two new items, items 18 and 19. 18 is approval of submission of an energy audit application. That's part of the LGEA program, which helps to fund the New Jersey Clean Energy Program. So we put in the application, and they do an audit, and then based on the audit, we'll be know what parts of our schools need to be upgraded to do better energy conservation. Number 19 is renewal of the ACES Electric Program, Enhanced Renewal Product Participation. This is the program to use renewable energy, but paying a tiny, tiny bit more. And so we'll pay 1.175, 100, 100,000ths of a penny, a tiny, tiny, tiny amount, which amounts to very, very little money, but use renewable energy, and it gives us sustainable Jersey certification credits, so that our schools are Jersey-certified energy savings.
And it makes Andrew happy. Anything we do to be green makes Andrew happy, so.
Anything for Andrew.
Anything for Andrew, indeed. So that's the two new items.
All right. Thank you very much, Mark.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions for Mark on the finance items?
Yeah. So just for number 16, it says that specifically, they'll be fixing the leaks for the roofs in the girls' locker room and the middle school, high school, and media center. But there's also been leaks, like, in other places, because I know that outside the cafeteria in that hallway, after the snowstorm, there were, like, trash cans set up, and there were, like, different parts of the roof that had, like, been leaky, and then just parts of it fell off. So I was wondering if anything would be done for those.
I have to defer to Scott and Lynda.
That's a good question. We actually had leaks at several different schools, but the high school appeared to have gotten hit the worst. And this was, by the way, a systemic issue across the county. My peers got together, the meeting, a day or so after the storm. It was the Friday after the storm, and we're all commiserating about that. But we are having a meeting with the facilities director, I believe, next week, to discuss what we need to do, whether we need to patch, replace, so we're going to be addressing that.
I just wanted to mention, roof repairs, patchwork, happens all the time.
Right.
The reason these items are on the agenda are because of the size of the work.
Right.
Okay? When it's, you know, a big job, then it goes on the agenda. But otherwise, we have, you know, piecemeal work done, like, whenever it's needed.
And based on the size of the roofs, I mean, there's a large number of roofs on all of the buildings. This has been a systemic problem since I've lived in Highland Park, which is 40 years. And when I was on the school board years ago, this was also an ongoing problem. Always roof issues, much more than now, I would say, because some of the roofs were actually really fixed properly. But it's very hard, and even if you own a home, it's an ongoing issue, sadly.
All righty. If only you did your roof once and it lasted forever, right?
That's right.
Whoever comes up with that roof is going to be a bajillionaire. Or not. All right. Anybody have other questions for Mark? No? All right, so we will move on to personnel with Judy.
Okay. I think we have a few adjustments from last week, so let me see. Oh, yes. So we have two additional resignations. We have the resignation of a paraprofessional at Irving School. And then we have a retirement. Cheryl Leifer, the school nurse at Irving for many, many years, will be finishing up the school year June 30th and retiring. So I think, thanks to Cheryl for all her years of service.
After how many years, Scott?
Oh, my gosh.
I'll find out for you.
I mean, she's been there through all my kids.
I'm sure.
Yeah. Number nine is a recommendation to change the status of Steven Lubis from a part-time technician to a full-time technician, effective November 20th.
May I interrupt?
Yes. She's been here for 24 years.
Wow.
So she'll be completing, I guess, 25 by the time she leaves.
That's great.
the school year June 30th and retiring. So I think, thanks to Cheryl for all her years of service.
After how many years, Scott?
Oh, my gosh.
I'll find out for you.
She's been there through all my kids.
A fixture.
Yeah. Number nine is a recommendation to change the status of Steven Lubis from a part-time technician to a full-time technician effective November 20th.
May I interrupt? Yes, she's been here for 24 years.
Wow.
So she'll be completing, I guess, 25 by the time she leaves.
That's great. Twelve is a clarification. Last week, we were approving additional instructional assignments, and I was led to believe that they were actually for glow fill-ins. But the actual case is that one of our special ed teachers is going out on leave a little earlier than expected. So these four teachers are doing additional assignments to cover for that teacher. So that's not the glow program, but another special ed teacher. Let's see what else, anything else.
Okay. I don't think that's correct for 12, is it? It's not a leave. For 12?
No, but can I expand then on that?
Yeah, yeah.
And I have to apologize to Mark. Mark, you and I talked about the financial implications
Yes.
of this resolution.
Yes.
It's still not going to be a negative impact financially.
Right.
But the point that Judy's making is that these are teachers who are stepping in for somebody who will be back, I believe, before the end of the year, Judy. The teacher had to leave early. So these teachers, instead of us hiring an additional teacher, will be taking that role.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, and you did fill me in.
I apologize for the miscommunication.
No, no, it's fine. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Seconds. Eighteen is an approval of a revision of FMLA NJFLA family leave dates for employee 4548 from October 1st until June 30th. The return date had been undetermined previously. Number 20, this is what we talked about last week with approving the teachers, the Saudi teachers to be in district observing in the classroom. So that is on the agenda with an addition that if we approve it, the Board of Ed believes that there is great benefit and this cultural exchange of ideas. However, the Board of Ed wishes to voice disapproval of the Saudi government's actions in Yemen and related to the death of General Jamar Kasot... Kasot, thank you. Not going to try that again. So that is on the agenda. And, oh my goodness, we did have a lot more. Sorry about that. Okay, 27, approval of a Title I homework program teacher sub. We have 28, the approval of sheltered instruction training. Leanne Matthews to present sheltered instruction training to one second grade teacher, one third grade teacher, and the fourth grade teachers on December 3, 10, 18, and a full day, for a full day, and December 13 for a half day to fifth graders. And all the dates are listed. 29 is approval of a home instructor. 30 is the approval of a volunteer coach for middle school basketball and middle school baseball for the 2018-90 season by Christopher Bray. 31 is the approval of substitute secretaries for the district, Caitlin Kovalcek and Regina McManus-Smith. And that's it for the changes in the agenda or in additions.
Okay. Anybody have any questions for Judy?
I have just a very brief comment, and that is, I wanted to thank Darcy and Scott for the suggestion to the item number, item number 20, about the teachers from Saudi Arabia. I think it solves the problem I had. And I also wanted a comment that our student reps and the students and teachers at the high school, who we heard from, also were very, very helpful, along with the comment that Rob Ruslowich and some others made, which is, how do you single out a specific, you know, country every time you're unhappy by taking it out on individuals who I have no problem with? So thank you all, and I think this is a very good solution to the moral problem and moral question that we've had.
I echo that. Thank you. And as to the students, yeah, it was great. We got a bunch of comments from people in a high school social studies class, which was fantastic, and of course, from you guys. And that really did prompt us to think harder about it. I do want to clarify, there were a couple comments from the social studies students to the effect that they were, there was a perception that perhaps we were hostile to having Saudi teachers in the district. And I, if it wasn't clear, we welcome international staff and students in this district. That was never the issue. The issue was whether we wanted to endorse a program run by the Saudi government. So if those teachers are listening, we're very glad to have you here.
Amen.
Amen. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, guys.
So, sorry, for number seven with the resignation of the nurse, is there a plan for any replacements or?
Of course. And if you notice, it's not until the end of the year. So we have quite some time. Anytime there's a resignation, those wheels get put in motion. But this is not until the end of the year, so we wouldn't need someone until September, right? I mean, there's no one staffs it over the summer, so.
We'll probably start hiring in April.
I just wanted to kind of put a little asterisk next to number seven. Ms. Leifer's resignation, her retirement. Yeah, I mean, as a new parent and a really nervous one, it was really good to have her, you know, checking up and making sure we had all the paperwork. No one gets past Ms. Leifer without an immunization. And she's so good with kids that are nervous, and especially moms that are nervous. So I just wanted to, you know, mention that, recognize her, and to hope she enjoys the rest of her year and her retirement.
Well, we will be sure before the end of the year, there will be something, award recognition for any retirees.
A quick question on number seven. Within the school district, does she do anything more than as a school nurse? I know she does a tremendous amount, like, in her position as a school nurse with the community. But officially, within the school district, she's, her title is as a school nurse, and that's, is there more to her position in the school?
No.
Oh, okay.
I mean, veteran nurse and role model for others, but that's an informal position.
She's exceptional, and I'm just, you know, it's, she's got a, it'd be a hard spot to fill.
Yeah, I feel sorry for the person who comes back, Ms. Leifer, but I'm sure she'll enjoy her retirement.
Awesome. Okay, if there aren't any other questions on personnel items, we will move on to policies with Ann.
And there are no changes from last week, so that's all I got, folks.
Okey-dokey.
Oh, you know what? I'm sorry, actually, I did have a question. We, I think we tabled one or decided not to put it on the agenda. You were going to, one of the suicide-related policies?
Actually, you know what? I didn't get to get those to the folks that I wanted to, but those, just for first reading. So we still have time until next time. So I don't think we have to table anything.
Okay. It was just the one, right? That was...
Oh, it was the two, right.
Yeah, and 8462.
Yep.
Okay, great, yeah, thanks. So for first reading, with the understanding that we may be doing some modifications for secondary.
Right, just for the student suicide prevention.
And 8462 also had a final paragraph about suicide.
Well, then that would, we would have to table, because that's for second reading.
Oh, that's for second reading, I'm sorry. Well, for my, I mean...
I think it's okay.
From my perspective, yeah, I'm happy to delete that paragraph and then have it addressed in the suicide policy.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, all right. Sorry about that, yes.
Absolutely. Yeah, so that policy, before we meet again, I will have someone take a look at that for us, and then I think everything that's for second reading should be A-OK.
I just wanted to add on the policy section that we will, Ann and I have been talking, and we will be discussing, the policy committee will be discussing an updated homework policy, in particular, to review the use of computers. And that'll come up during that policy meeting, and I think, you know, step in the right direction that we, Ann was talking about at the last meeting.
Thank you for your work on that.
You're welcome.
Did you want to add something, Scott?
No, I'm sorry. I'm making sure that our agenda is November 27th.
You grabbed it.
I know, everybody, not everyone reflects that, so I'll place it on the agenda for our next meeting.
Yes, please, and, yeah, I was going to send you that. And I would hope that we could have something for the first December workshop on a new homework policy, so we can move this along. I've done some research and gotten some very useful policy changes done by other districts to address this issue.
And that strikes me as pretty urgent, given that the school, we've already had one marking period, I guess, and I don't think we have a provision for students who cannot access technology at home, so we need to move on it.
Perhaps the changes that we might propose are those for which I have not sought input yet from the community. I did collect a lot of data from students and teachers, but it was my intent to then have some focus groups with the community, a large, but we can talk about that.
But this is policy, this isn't implementation. So the policy kind of sets a guideline, and the actual implementation is another thing, so that, for instance, the surveys, I'd be very interested in the surveys, because maybe it's possible to, for the district to acquire equipment if the surveys show that we could afford it for the students who need the computers. But that's an implementation detail, it's not a detail, but it's an implementation issue.
I misread what you were saying earlier. I, so it sounds like you just want to focus on the technology piece for now.
But the technology and a few things that are, our policy is very old, so there's a few pieces that have come up in the last few years, very simple ones, that we should just go over and look at and perhaps add to the policy. But again, it's a policy guideline more than implementation guidelines. The homework issue is, I think, more important, but the other ones are fairly straightforward. And I think, Scott, you'll, I'll send you a copy of what I've been working on, but it's very straightforward. It should be easy to implement.
And certainly, the technology-related changes to the policy, or the changes that would affect our use of technology, that needs to happen soon. We've already had a one marking period go by, and I don't think we have time to wait for a focus group. The policy can always be revised if indeed public input touches on the policy rather than the implementation.
And that's why Ann and I have been discussing it.
I also wanted to ask if we have any plans as a collective board to address the issue of town-wide Wi-Fi with the council? Is that something that we are...
I'm having a hard time hearing you. Can you speak up?
I'm sorry. I'm so loud usually. Are we interested collectively as a board in working with the council on providing town-wide Wi-Fi? I feel like that's something that should, I mean, to me, Wi-Fi should be a public utility at this point. The Internet should be a public utility and access to it as well, so.
Yeah, I don't know the ins and outs of it, but, I mean, I think I've mentioned this to you in the past, when Scott and I have broached this with the mayor, it's fallen remarkably flat. So, and again, I haven't done the research, but the response seemed to be where this has been tried, it hasn't worked terribly well, you know, so I, and I haven't, you know, obviously, honestly pursued it, so. I mean, if that was something that somebody wanted to do some research on, I'd be, would be more than happy to, you know, take another stab at it. But we've kind of put that out on the table, and it didn't, it didn't go anywhere.
I mean, I would be happy to work on it, and, you know, anyone else who would like to help, because I know that the Seattle City Council has done it. I don't know that they've done it in a way that we can do it. I really need to research more, but I'm very interested in learning more about that.
Yeah, if anybody wants to do that research, have at it.
I would only ask Scott on this issue. If you are, you are doing surveys, not if, but you are doing surveys. One question to survey students would be the question of, if you didn't have Wi-Fi at home, what would you use to get Wi-Fi access? Because there are places in town that a student who wants to do their work, I mean, including friends' houses, including the library, including Dunkin' Donuts, there are places you can go. And so I would want to survey to make, do what we have, you know, and with due respect, not what we could have. And, you know, we're falling short, and let's not fall short if we don't have to.
Sure, we need to be a multi-pronged...
It's a big job.
Yeah, so this is a simultaneous effort.
But it may be that the large majority, or even all of the students, could get access in other ways.
So there are two surveys that are being distributed. One's already out there for the teachers, had 66 people respond so far, who are wrapping it up next Friday. And the questions were geared more towards their perception, to collect data about their perception of their students' access to technology than anything else. The student/family survey is going to be implemented next week. Middle and high school students will be completing the survey in either homeroom or physical education classes. And we're going to be providing paper copies of the survey to students at Irving and Barnum to put in their folders to take home. The question that I think speaks to your concern about the survey is, how do you access the Internet at home? Circle all that apply, and there's an option, no Internet access. The others are, of course, cell service or cable, phone provider, satellite.
Another question might be, I'm sorry.
I just think one of the options might be, you know, we have satellite, digital, you know, blah, 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 blah. Maybe one option could be like at a friend's house or something to indicate that at the library.
Yes, there is a question.
It's hard to get it out, you know, the library's not open very much.
So maybe, Scott, could you consult, would you guys be willing to take a look at the survey?
Absolutely. I'd be very happy to give some...
Well, just send me an email with some ideas, so I can throw them in there before I send it out.
I will.
Yeah, we have to, Monday.
Can you send me a copy, and I'll give you some comments about it?
Will do.
So, one thing that I could add here is, and Scott, I shared this with you. At the school boards meeting, I went to the, an Ed Foundation presentation. And in Morris County, the Ed Foundation was able to provide Kajits to low-income families. Those are, those are little pieces of equipment, maybe somebody can explain better, but they basically enable people to have safe online connectivity in their home where they do not have Wi-Fi. So those are small pieces of equipment that, I guess, the Morris, in Morris Township, students who were, who were unable to access Wi-Fi in their home were given these Kajits through a grant from the foundation there.
I do have a note, you gave it your contact info, and I have a note to follow up on that, Monday the 26th. So I'll let you know if I come with that, anything.
Oh, good, yeah. And I'm actually, tomorrow night, attending the Ed Foundation meeting, I'm going to mention that this is something that they had done. I don't know if this is something that we would want to be asking this foundation for, or whether we would be able to provide our own funding for it. I have no idea what the, what the cost or the, you know.
You know what, I'll put a new business item together for the December 10th board meeting, if by then I have information back from Erica.
Oh, great. So I'll wait for that before I bring it up tomorrow.
Like, yeah, remember, I will be there. I'll be at the HP Post Office, so you can bring it up.
Awesome. All right.
Yeah, so I see the problems with, like, having students outside of school not having devices, but the fact is, like, in our schools, at least in the high school for me, the devices and the Wi-Fi are unstable and not reliable. So, like, throughout classes, we're not even able, some classes we just, like, completely waste because the device won't connect to the Internet, or it just cuts off randomly in the middle. And I feel like we have to fix what's inside our schools first before we, like, that's...
We very often have to be doing multiple things at once, right? It's a very big equity issue when homework is being assigned, or when students, the way students can study for a test is only online, but we have students who can't have that access at home. So we, you know, one good thing, we have lots of folks in the district who are very smart, we can walk and chew gum at the same time, we can do both.
Yeah, I would also like to stress that it is an issue that should be more discussed by the board. Around 32% of the suggestions that we've received are about school Wi-Fi. Personally, it has been very difficult in classes that rely on using the Internet to be able to finish your work. And it's definitely one of the things that the student body most, you know, cares about.
I'm curious to know how much in-class work depends on the Internet. Scott, do you have a, well, maybe you could tell us.
It depends on the class, but a lot of times for projects, or in English, we often write essays in class. I can't, I don't know an exact number, but...
Yeah, so for, like, our science classes, we also use different simulations online in class to help...
Oh, the simulations, okay.
Yeah. And so in social studies, we usually do, like, research, we do different types of papers online also. And so, like, and during class, when an entire class period is wasted, because you just can't connect to the Internet because of our, the quality of our technology, it's just really frustrating because students aren't being productive.
That does sound frustrating. I wonder if, I assume students can go to the library and do research, right? Because that would be hardwired Internet into the library databases. I mean, it's not a solution, it's not a permanent solution.
There are desktops in the library lab at the middle high school, they can be used.
Are there numerous ones? I mean, how many are there?
Oh, there are over 20.
I mean, if students are, like, feeling that class time is being wasted, I would hope that students, the teachers are advising students that they could go do that.
We've dedicated personnel to this by creating a network specialist position who starts, in fact, this person starts on Monday. He happens to be behind the camera, so fortunately...
All right, it's all on you.
John, you hear, you hear the concerns.
John's going to be the guy in the trench who's trying to resolve this issue, so you've heard us, lots of clear.
I'd like to suggest, Linda, that we put this on our Finance and Facilities Committee agenda for the first meeting in December, and have a discussion, and perhaps get some data from the high school principal at least, just to get an understanding of, and perhaps our network team.
Specialist.
That's right. And understand what we have, why it's not what it should be, and what we can do about it, and what it will cost us. I think that's, as Darcy said, we can fix that, and we can also figure out how to provide equipment or access to equipment to students who don't have that equipment. I think we can do both.
I am, it's fru...
I'm surmountable. Oh, sorry.
No, no, I'm sorry, I thought you were fin, finished. It's frustrating, because I feel like, you know, every six months, there's something on the board agenda about, like, improving Wi-Fi connectivity and, you know, getting a new, this kind of equipment and that kind of equipment. And I don't know if, like, our Internet use is outpacing the improvements we're making? I mean, are we just way underestimating how much Internet the teachers are using?
It's probably, the use is probably outpacing what we have, and as we, I mean, and I, you know, I experienced this, like, practically my whole life.
Right.
As we upgrade and do better, the use goes up, and they feed off each other, and it's hard to ever keep up, but we can, we can improve.
What I'm hearing is you have a great idea for a future report, under your superintendent's report, is to have a fleshed out...
An update on the infrastructure?
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree, I agree.
I've been looking for topics to discuss.
So schedule that one.
Uh-huh.
You're coming back, John, you're going to have to be behind the camera and behind the podium, you're just going to have to run back and forth.
So December 10th, by the way, Megan McNally will be coming to talk about the Irving program, and then I'll, maybe December 17th will be my follow-up, that'll give you a month.
Awesome. All right. So if there isn't anything else about policy, well, Annika's not here for equity. I think you guys met over the last week, though.
No, we're meeting on...
Oh, you're... We met, we met last month, when we have a meeting coming up.
Next week.
Next week.
Oh, okay, all right. All right, so probably wasn't anything to report anyway.
No.
Okay. All right, so that brings us to public comment. Highland Park Board of Education welcomes public participation. Is there this time for your comments? Anybody have any comments? What, no? Nothing? No. Okay. All right, so then we are going to move on to our action items. Michelle, could you move the curriculum instruction items for us, please?
Yes, I would like to move items one through four.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? No? Seeing none. Linda, could we please have a roll call?
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Ms. Simorusti?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden-Di-Nikola?
Yes.
Ms. Pietrabono?
Yes.
Mr. Rizlevich?
Abstain on two, yes on the remainder.
Mark, could you move the Finance and Facilities items, please?
Yes, I'd like to move items number one through 19.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? No? Okay, seeing none. Linda, could we please have a roll call?
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Ms. Simorusti?
Yes, and abstain on six.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Losing my voice.
Mr. Magaziner?
Oh, have to abstain here on something?
No. It was only for me.
Oh, that was your thing. Yes.
Ms. McFadden-Di-Nikola?
Yes.
Ms. Pietrabono?
Yes.
Mr. Rizlevich?
Yes.
It was only a trap to see if I was paying attention. Okay, personnel items. Judy, could you move those for us, please?
Sure, I'd like to move items one through 31.
All righty. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? No? Linda, could we please have a roll call?
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Ms. Simorusti?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden-Di-Nikola?
Yes.
Ms. Pietrabono?
Yes.
Mr. Rizlevich?
Yes.
Okay, and Ann, finally, the policies.
I'd like to move policy numbers one and two, please.
All right. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? No? Linda, could we have a roll call?
Ms. Byer?
Yes.
Ms. Simorusti?
Yes.
Ms. Gowan?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Magaziner?
Yes.
Ms. McFadden-Din Nicola?
Yes.
Ms. Pietrobono?
Yes.
Mr. Rizlevich?
Yes.
All right, so that brings us to our Board Liaison Reports. Do you have anything from our New Municipal Drug and Alcohol Alliance?
In the board folders, you'll see reports from both Wendy and when we get to library, Rebecca, Wendy Yang attended her first meeting of the Municipal Alliance.
Excellent. All right, I will have to check that out. Michelle, do you have anything for us from HPTV or public information?
No, I do not, nothing new.
Okay. Rob, anything from Ed Foundation? Sounds like you have a meeting...
I have a meeting tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Yeah.
So, we'll hear from you on that next month. Judy, anything from Commission for Universal Access?
No, I don't, I need to follow up, I haven't heard from them lately.
Okay. That seems unusual.
Yeah. That's why I have to follow up with that.
Okay. And you said there's something in the drive for us from Ms. Fittipaldi on the library, shared services, still nothing. That like cropped up like a year ago, there was like one meeting and then it just went right back into dormancy, so... Ruth, CPAC?
Yes, unfortunately...
Uh-oh.
CPAC needs to seek out a new president.
Oh, dear.
So, if anyone listening at home is interested in taking the reins, please reach out to me and I will get you in touch with Mrs. Bedine.
Oh.
But as of right now, there is non-functioning CPAC.
There's no leadership. Oh, that's really, I'm sorry to hear that. And it was really like, it was a surprise to me when I found out that there are less districts that have CPACs than don't have CPACs. Like, we were, you know, the exception, not the rule, to have a functioning, somewhat vibrant CPAC for a while, which is, it's too bad. It seems like such a nice resource for special ed parents to be able to get together and, you know, look at particular issues or, you know, to share concerns.
Well, I'm looking forward to the renewal. I think that we just need to find somebody who has the time to do it.
Yeah, it's hard.
Yeah, so...
All right, well, thank you for that update. Monique's not here to give us an update on PO-SOC, so we'll look forward to that next month. Ann, do you have anything for us from Human Relations?
Nothing new, we're meeting next week.
Okay, great. Mark, anything for Board of Health?
Yeah, we did meet, we did discuss the high school schedule concerns, and I see it's under new business, so let's discuss that. I'll be very brief after a discussion I had with Mr. Lassiter.
Okay. Sounds good. Rob, you have anything for us from the Green Team?
Green Team did meet, and two of the items in the, that we passed tonight were part of the discussion that we had about, there was a couple of items that weren't necessarily changes to anything that the board has to do, but the board actually has to talk about certain things.
Right.
Where we talk about energy star appliances or we do certain actions that helps towards getting those points for the schools and for the certification. So, we did have a meeting and I gotta commend everyone who's on those different teams for the amount of work that they put in trying to get the certification for the schools.
Yeah, no, it's a big laundry list of things.
It is a laundry list and it's one of those kind of things where you just have to read the language and try to understand the language and hopefully you get it right and then you submit and then you go back and you do it again and then you do it again the following year. So, it is a, everyone there is doing an amazing job. And what they passed on to me to do with the board is rather light, thankfully, but I don't know when the next meeting is, but hopefully I'll get a little bit more so to make sure that we're fulfilling our obligation because everyone else there is really doing
Who's coordinating everything now? Is Melanie doing it?
Yeah.
Tracy Maiden is the in-house coordinator.
Thank you.
All right, awesome. Thanks, Rob. So, me as delegate to New Jersey School Boards, I did go on Saturday, although I have to say, it was very tempting to skip. But I did not. Nine o'clock in the morning is early to get yourself to Mercer County Community College on a Saturday morning after snow and it was cold outside and warm at home, but I did go. Oh, and also, after I left here last Monday night, I had an email in my inbox saying that Senate President Steve Sweeney wasn't gonna be there.
We saw that.
What?
We saw that.
Shucks.
He stayed home in bed.
I don't know where Senate President Sweeney was, but he was not there. So, in his stead was someone from the Senate Majority Office and, who is part of the commission who came up with this Path to Progress and former Education Commissioner Lucille Davy, who was Commissioner up and through Chris, up into Chris Christie for about, I think, like five years or so. I'd never met her before, still haven't met her, I've never seen her speak before. It was an interesting meeting, as I mentioned last time, there were no resolutions, so there was nothing to be voted on, so that's the first time I've been to a delegate assembly where the delegates didn't really have anything to do but sit there and listen. And so, we listened to this presentation from the two of them on the Path to Progress, which really the two things it came down to were special education and regionalization. Those are their two big pushes for the public education side of their plan. Where this plan's gonna go, what momentum it's gonna gather, is anybody's guess. The vast majority of the questions that were asked of the two presenters by the delegates, the answers were, we'll have to look into that, we haven't really, that wasn't really part of our conversation. Like, there was a lot of ifs and hows and buts and, you know, that a lot of things weren't thought out. And I felt like a lot of delegates felt like a lot of the, particularly on the regionalization end, the reasons that were being given for regionalization, you can make counterarguments very easily. Like, one of the big arguments they kept coming back to, and this was actually kind of interesting because they kept talking about, both of them talked about visiting different districts that were smaller, either K5 or K8 districts, and saying, you know, what an awful job they did at this thing because they just couldn't have the proper staff to, you know, have a good music program, or they just couldn't, you know, get their curriculum articulated well enough with the regionalized high school for the kids to do well once they got to high school. And then people from those districts would be in the room and stand up and be like, ah, I think we actually do really well at that, you know? So, it was like really strange. They're clearly used to giving these presentations in a vacuum and not in front of people who are actually from these districts who could stand up and be like, but no, actually, our kids are actually really well-prepared when they go to the high school and they do really well. And so, that part, I think, was a little, a little jarring for them. And some things they just didn't have answers to, so you'll be really surprised that I was the first one to the microphone to ask them a question about their regionalization plans. And my question to them was a very simple one, saying, okay, you guys have this plan to force traditional public school districts. And the ex-commissioner Lucille Davy said, if she were still Commissioner, she would be forcing districts to do this. It wasn't a like, you know, well, if this works for the districts or if the, it was, I'd be making you. This is the best thing educationally. And so, she seems to be the educational justification for it, where then the Senate Majority Office is all about the supposed budget savings that are gonna come from this.
So, she's the bad cop and they're the good cop?
Or she's the good cop and they're the bad cop. Like, she's like, this is educationally sound, this is important, you know, we can't possibly, you know, articulate the curriculum from K to five and then eight to, you know, or then seven to, you know, she was trying to make the argument that you can't articulate that, the curriculum and that it's better for kids to go through a K-12 district. So, lots of us from K-12 districts were going, it's kinda hard in a K-12 district, too, you know? Like, being a K-12 district is no panacea that all of a sudden your curriculum is, you know, perfectly articulated from pre-K through 12, so... Right.
I've worked in two K8 districts, we had no problem. I mean, is it an issue like we have here? You're right, absolutely right.
Yeah, I mean, so a lot of the arguments that they were making, everybody was just kinda like, meh, not really. But the first question I got up and asked was, okay, so you're saying that you would make K5 and K8 districts become part of regional K-12 districts? There are 89 charter schools throughout the state, the vast majority of which are K5 or K8 or 912. What is your plan for forcing them to consolidate either with each other or with the districts they're a part of? Stunned silence, like just absolute stunned silence. They had no, hadn't, we, oh, we hadn't really thought about that, we hadn't really considered that, that's something we'll have to take a look at. So, there's this forcing this onto traditional public school K to five, K to eight districts, but all these charter schools that they keep popping up all over the place that are K5, K8, 912, have a field day. So, inherently, there are lots of, Michelle, the look of disgust on your face, Michelle.
I'm so sorry, I can't, like, I can't, I wish I were better at covering up what I'm thinking.
It was very, it was very frustrating. There were a lot of very frustrated people in the audience because then part of the other plan, that if, so it's a special ed piece and then also pension and benefits. And they didn't get very much into the pension and benefits piece because I think they're thinking they're gonna have to deal with the teachers on that one, not so much the school board members, but it was, I'm still not 100% clear how that's gonna work. So, I would suggest any of the union members to be taking a look at this. It's, I think it's actually, it's just pathtoprogress.org. And it's all, the report is on there and it's all spelled out. It is absolutely worth taking a look at to see what it is these folks are trying to push through our legislature. And then the special ed piece, and again, you know, I'm not best, the best at special ed law, but one of the, one of the pieces that they were talking about was the state taking on some of that burden, but then this, and then this always freaks me out, but then the state would have more of a say in where students get placed, so that just makes me all kinds of...
Especially students who are going to like a residential program.
Yeah, that makes me all kinds of nervous.
A state-level group to address IEP placement.
Yeah, so, I mean, there were so, there were way more unanswered questions that were, you know, it was like all the things that they were proposing are, I kept making, I kept making a statement that there seemed to be a lot of trails that they haven't explored on their Path to Progress, you know? Like, there are so many places that this thing could veer off that they just don't, nobody seems to have thought through. So, they're just kind of putting this out there to school board members and saying, so what do you guys think of this? Well, have you thought of that? Well, no, not really. So...
I mean, that makes me, that makes me think that there is some other agenda at work.
Yeah, I mean, it's, yeah, I mean, they're trying, there's a...
Yeah, I don't wanna, I wanna assume.
A budget crisis, there's, yeah, so, I mean, they're gonna try to dress it up a little bit as educationally sound, but...
Here's a tweet from, I think it's from pretty recent. If the mammoth, or mammoth challenges that stem from pension costs and medical care expenses are left unaddressed, they will prevent the state from making the important investments that are needed to help New Jersey stay competitive.
Right.
Wait, but we give tax breaks to Pearson for moving from one county to the next.
Yeah, it's, it's gonna be interesting. So, everyone, just keep your, keep your ears open for the Path to Progress and what Senator Sweeney's up to, because there's, he's got lots of ideas.
I don't even like that name, Path to Progress.
If the presentation that we got on Saturday is any indication, a lot of these things that they're gonna put forward have not been thoroughly thought out, vetted, so...
Okay.
It's gonna be interesting. So, that was really all from the delegate assembly. And Rob, do you have anything exciting from the Middlesex County School Boards Association?
The next meeting is December 6th. It again will be about budget, but rather than presenting it from the point of view of like the state budget and how that is structured, how it affects school districts, this is more about taking into account what the administration would wanna do and how the school board reacts to that, trying to, how different business administrators are looking at budgets and they're presenting that to anyone who's in attendance.
All righty.
So, it sounds interesting, I think we've all been in the thick of it, but it's, generally, it's a fun night to go out and learn something from a slightly different perspective, so...
And get dinner.
And get dinner.
Free dinner.
All right, what, December 6th you said?
December 6th.
All right. Think about that. All right, so unless anybody has anything else that we missed there, we'll move on to my president's report and I just wanted to, I just put the New Jersey School Boards Association workshop on there again, so Michelle could get an opportunity to share out anything that she wanted to share out. And then there was also one other presentation that I wanted to talk about that I attended that I thought was super important, so. I'll let you go first, Michelle.
Thank you. Did you wanna talk about EOF?
I already did.
Okay, okay. So, I just didn't wanna overlap or steal your thunder. So, I went to so many different things that I was excited to report back on, so I'm gonna try and be brief, so just, you know, yell at me if I'm...
Could I interrupt a second? Michelle, with apologies, I'm gonna leave now because of my childcare situation.
Yeah.
But I'm sorry about that and I hope I'll get a chance to speak with you about it later.
Yes.
You can watch the video from home.
Well, actually...
Thank you, sorry, I guess.
Just so you know, Ann, I was planning on writing up in more detail, like I was just gonna run through them tonight, so expect a really fun email from me.
That sounds awesome. Thank you.
Good night. Good night, guys. Okay, so, there were so many different things. The first one that I went to that I kinda left like running to find Darcy to tell her about was called "A Wall of Chairs: Breaking Down Barriers That Stifle Innovative Boardsmanship." And I thought that was interesting because my assumption was that it was gonna be about like different personalities on the boards around New Jersey, how they work together or, you know, people who have different political views, how they create solutions for different issues that arise. And it was that, but it wasn't that. It was really about their board structure and the meeting structure, like how we do our curriculum committee meetings and, you know, so on. They actually had, now this is Howell Township, where I'm talking about, they, they actually had a different structure and they went into some detail and it was very exciting because it was very different from the way that we do things. But it was inclusive of so many different parts of the community that I would love to see us replicate here. So, they had, for example, what they called Saturday Retreats. Once a month, the board and different groups would get together to discuss different topics. So, it was almost like a town hall situation, but it wasn't quite as large. The one that they talked about was, they had the fifth graders show up on a Saturday morning to talk to the board directly. And their assignment was to talk about ways that their school was a wonderful place to be and ways that it could be improved. And they did it through an art project. So, they had all of these board members out in different groups with fifth graders and they got to discuss things from the fifth grader's perspective. And they got to, yeah, they got to put up their interpretation of how they see their school. And the board member had to present, so had to, you know, take in and translate everything that the group had said. So, they had their artwork and they saved it and they brought it to the workshop. And it was just like one day, but they got so much done and they came up with words that they put into something that was kind of like a mission statement for their school. And that was something that the fifth graders helped them to do. So, that was a really interesting one and I feel like maybe a group of us is interested. I was invited to go and see one of their committee meetings, they're open to the public. And I asked a question and they said, yeah, that was, you know, really interesting and why don't you come down and check it out? So, if anyone wants to take a little field trip down to Howell, it might be fun.
Which committee meetings are open to the public?
All of them.
Real?
All of them. And I did ask about personnel because those are issues that are not necessarily discussed in public, but they said the majority of what they discuss in personnel can be spoken about in public. But what they mean by public is basically the door is open. They don't mean that it's videotaped, streamed, or anything. So, I'm super curious to see how they do that. Because, I don't know, it's so different from the way that I've heard of it traditionally done. So, that was interesting. The other one that I left, I actually emailed my son Luca's teacher in the high school, Mr. Roche, during the workshop. Because there was, so this workshop was Music Across the Disciplines. And it was this foundation that the musician Steve Van Zant, he had put together this foundation and he actually was the keynote speaker at workshop this year. So, what he did was he created a curriculum around music to use music as kind of a wedge to get kids excited about talking about all kinds of different disciplines. So, this, this one that got me super excited and I emailed Mr. Roche in the middle of it, was an entire unit on rap and riots in California in the 90s. And it was like, the screen that was flipping through all of the different disciplines and lessons, you know, Ice Cube was the center of this lesson. So, I'm sitting there like, I gotta, I gotta go, I gotta, I gotta go talk to someone. Like, I was flipping out, it was so exciting. Because what they did was they talked about the poetry of rap, they talked about the, the writing skills involved, the rhythm of the music, the political implications. They talked about the writing skills involved, the rhythm of the music, the political implications. And so, every single lesson was really that rich. It was music at the center of everything. And you might not be into music, but most people are, so it seemed like it was a great thing to introduce kids to all different kinds of topics that they wouldn't ordinarily hear about. And, you know, part of it is stuff that they already have heard, they know this music, and they're like, "Oh, I didn't realize that song was about that," you know? So, that was super exciting. And if you want to learn more about that, it's a website that you can check out, and the curriculum is there. You just take it. It's called teachrock.org. I see you're writing it down. Yay! So, also, in that workshop, there was a presenter who was super excited to see all of us getting so excited, and she suggested that we check out a documentary that was something that was included in the curriculum. It's called "Rumble," and I think it's on Amazon Prime, but it's about the Native American influence on rock and roll.
Wow.
So, you know, that's a great way to, yeah, that's a great way to introduce students to the idea that, you know, Native Americans still exist. They live everywhere in the country. I mean, it's not a Thanksgiving situation, it's not only one day a year, like, they're a part of our everyday lives, just like any other part of the community. And it was, it was a really great workshop. So, yeah, Mr. Roche got a very weird email from me in the middle of that one. There was others that we talked about or that we had gone to together, Darcy and I, but several that I went to alone. Those were two of the ones that I went to alone. But we went together to one about the Educational Opportunity Fund, EOF, which I had heard about before, but I didn't understand quite what it was. So, EOF is basically a program, it used to be a co...
And I did talk about it last week, and I sent Scott, no, that's okay, I just wanted to let you know.
Yeah.
And I sent Scott the contact information to Mr. Jean, who did the presentation.
Yeah.
He said he'd be following up with him.
Okay, that's awesome. Yeah, that was, that was really exciting.
That was the one I was most excited about, too.
Yeah. Then, there was one that I went to called "Celebrate Learning with Digital Portfolios." And that was a district that has really like nothing in common with Highland Park, other than that they're both in New Jersey. But it was like a one-to-one district, a very big district, Ocean Township. And what they do is, they have middle schoolers and high schoolers, well, when you first get to the middle school, you create a webpage that's basically like a journal of your academic life. And you put up a website that basically becomes an example of your best work in every single aspect of class that you have. So, you can put up a video that you, you know, maybe want to showcase your public speaking, all kinds of different things, but it was, it was what it sounds like, a digital portfolio. And at the end of your senior year, you can use that, at the end of your junior year, I guess, you can use that to apply to schools.
It's genius.
Yeah, so it was a really fabulous idea, but the part that I liked about it the most, beside getting yourself into a good college and blah, 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 because there's so much pressure, it was the idea of checking in with yourself. What is my best work? What would I like to present about myself? What do I like? You know, lots of like self-reflection and maturity, I think, would be grown in a situation where you were presenting yourself on a website. They are secure websites, the students' websites, they are not for public consumption until the students are of age to publish, you know? So, there is personal information, and they do keep it private, but part of working on your portfolio is collaborating with your teachers, your best work, and what would you like to present, and how would you like to present it? So, I think it's a really wonderful way to journal in the 21st century, really. So, that was really cool. Like I said, though, they have one-to-one iPads, I think it was, they have lots of different technology available to them. I have to say, though, my second favorite is one workshop that I went to alone about school librarians, because I had no idea, I mean, for me, I thought school librarians were, you know, the lady who checks books out. School librarians are trained in Naviance. School librarians can be administrators of a certain degree, because they can actually be like the center where all the teachers are spokes of the wheel, and they are the center, you know, helping them to refine their curriculum, or write their curriculum, or research different topics. So, that was just like a little bit of what I learned about the capabilities of media specialists and traditionally, school librarians. And what I came away from with that is that we are really, really underutilizing our school librarians. They have skills that we are not really harvesting for students' gain. I can say that, you know, as the mother of a senior, it would be great to have someone else that knows how Naviance works, or that can sit with, you know, my kid and figure out how to apply for different scholarships and such. So, you know, research is a skill that is critical in the future, and school librarians are experts in research. So, I really kind of fell in love with that whole thing, and I have contacts now from that presentation that I would love to get more information. But my very, very favorite was what Darcy and I went to at the very end of Wednesday. They actually kicked us out of the building because we stayed so late. It was two of the kindest, like sweetest educators, Kathy Coop and Jeff Moore from Washington Township Schools, that that's a K-2 district. And, oh, that's right, Rob, you were there, too. Yeah, yeah. Ah, God, how do you describe this man giving the presentation to us?
I don't know.
He was like, if Jim Carrey and Mr. Rogers were able to like mesh, he was that like entertaining and insightful and kind. And he had so many things like that he was excited to share, but more than anything, he was all about social-emotional learning, creating a community that is a safe haven for young children. He really talked about like discovering who kids were as they grow, not deciding who they are, you know, too early in life. He just looked like he was super excited to get out of bed every single morning. So, he was great, and I just could not get enough. He's the only, that presentation was the only one that I bothered to kind of like make commentary and leave a review on the app, because I was so impressed. He was the kind of educator that was really inspiring, and I don't know what he drinks like caffeine-wise, but I want it.
So, you guys, council?
No, he was the superintendent, and so he described himself, though, he doesn't like to call himself the superintendent, he said that, "I'm a 3rd grade teacher that happened to become the superintendent."
Sounds great.
Yeah. So, he was just really great to watch, he was fun. And I wanted to go back to...
Yeah, he wanted to just keep talking. We're like, "Ah, we're gonna miss our trolley, our little tram back to the hotel, we gotta go, sorry."
Yeah, he was so generous.
Because he was just going and going and going, he was not gonna stop.
Okay, so, that was a really long-winded summary of my time at workshop, but I really want everyone to go next year. I really think that it's so wonderful, it's so well-spent.
And the Japanese restaurant there is really good.
Oh, my God, you guys, you have to, you, yeah, you have to go try that Japanese restaurant.
It's worth it, just for that. So, the one thing I wanted to bring up that I did not, I failed to mention last time, and I think was probably one of the most helpful presentations that I went to, was one that was called "Education Justice Partnership to Support Our Shared Youth." So, the, two of the main presenters at that presentation were unlikely folks for me to go listen to. The Chief of Police in Gloucester Township, his name is Chief Harry Earl, and Chris Kubret, who actually I have had the pleasure of meeting before, who's the Middlesex County Assistant Prosecutor, so our very own Assistant Prosecutor, and he deals primarily with juvenile cases. They did a really remarkable presentation, along with two women who talked mostly about the memorandum of agreement, and I know the Equity and Excellence Committee, you guys like really kind of went through that memorandum of agreement this year that we have with the police department. But the main focus of this presentation is what districts, prosecutors, and police departments can do, working together, to basically break the school-to-prison pipeline. And to hear a Chief of Police and a prosecutor standing up there, like really working hard to do that work, was just kind of like mind-blowing. And the fact that Highland Park isn't the place that's putting that together just kind of flipped me out. Like, these folks were so far past, you know, what we've experienced here over the last four or five years since we've been, you know, kind of struggling with this issue. I mean, they have an actual presentation that they go around the state doing to help coach police departments and other prosecutors. I mean, so we've already got a prosecutor who's on board, which is pretty amazing. He doesn't want to see our kids. He doesn't want to hear about it. He wants us to deal with it. He does not want to be dealing with our kids. And they presented some really, really interesting data that they've been looking at, particularly in Gloucester County. This police chief was really pretty remarkable. He was really encouraging districts to look at their, look at the stuff that we're trying to look at, look at why you're suspending kids, look at why you're expelling kids. And he put up some pretty impressive numbers. I mean, he showed, I've got his presentation up, and I'll send them to everyone. Some of the stuff actually was kind of scary, that things that have been reported to his department, that in 2015, they looked at all of the referrals to their department from the schools, and that 74% of those that were reported were voluntary. They were not anything that was mandated to be reported. So, that's, three out of every four cases being sent to his police department were things that they had, there was no reason for them to be involved, which I thought was pretty scary. And he presented information that said, "A single suspension or expulsion for a discretionary offense," so those things that you're not reported, you're not mandated to report, that did not include a weapon, almost tripled a student's likelihood of becoming involved in the juvenile justice system the following academic year. That's kind of mind-boggling.
That's awful. So, he's working with this Assistant Prosecutor, is he working with the schools as well?
Yeah, yeah, so they have a particular, like, they're working actively with the schools to help the schools deal with the behaviors that they're seeing in the schools, in the schools, not to take those behaviors and move them over to the police department.
So, that's 74%. That was from...
2015.
Okay. And they've been doing this since then?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, their goal is to continue to decrease that number. So, I went up and, so, I mean, they don't even like, one thing that I've heard Officer Joe talk about a lot is station house adjustments, that he can, when things come to him, he can, you know, kind of move things around so that it's not sent over to the prosecutor, it's dealt with in the, in the police department, and he can, they don't even want to see station house adjustments. They don't want them going there at all. They want to work with us to, or they want to work with their district to, to cut that path off altogether, to not rely on the police department, to deal with things that shouldn't be sent to the police department. So, I mean, he talked about Aces, he talked about, you know, schools being able to, you know, to work with a student, to, I mean, really, what we're talking about, what we heard a lot from Ms. Luxa about last week, to really be working with students, to identify what the issues are, to help them come up with better responses to things, not to just look at the behavior, come up with some consequence for the behavior, and I'm not explaining this very well, but you guys...
We know.
You know what I'm trying to say. So, I'm very excited to also send this information over to Suzie Wolkowitz, who is the council's liaison to the schools, to bring it up with the mayor. As, as the borough and the mayor move forward with staffing, with hiring, you know, in working with Officer Joe, I want them to be having these conversations with these folks. And Chief Earl was very clear that he is happy to go wherever and give a presentation, he could come and give a presentation to our community, we could host it jointly with the borough. I would love to do something like that, moving forward as this kind of, you know, as we start to really solidify ourselves as a district that is, you know, using restorative practices inside our schools, to really have our administrators and our staff and the police officers, everyone in town, you know...
On the same page.
Exactly, you know, like really embrace this philosophy. I mean, it's amazing that we have the person at the very top of this chain, right, our Assistant Prosecutor, who's gonna deal with our kids when they get to the prosecutor's office, saying, "Keep them down there, like, I don't want to see them."
And for the right reasons, he's not saying it because we're overwhelmed and we don't have enough, you know...
And when he presented, and he said he'd be happy to come and present also, his, and this is all new for him, in the last few years, from what I was understanding, that he went to one of these presentations that Chief Earl gave, and one of the exemplars that they were using was a case that he had prosecuted. So, they gave this example of a kid that never should have gone to that, to that, and so they were using this case that he had prosecuted, and he was like, you know, like trying to hide underneath the table, but it really made him take a look at the way that he was handling these cases that came to him, and should they even be coming to him? So, it really kind of made him do a 180 in his thinking, and then ultimately in his practice, which is, you know, changing your thinking is one thing, but then changing your practice is, is quite something else. So, I would love to have these gentlemen, you know, us look forward to some point in the future, to have these gentlemen here, to have this conversation with us. So, next time Scott and I meet with the mayor and Suzie, I will absolutely bring this up, and, you know, I'm happy to sit down with the chief, I'm happy to sit down with Joe. I can't imagine they're not aware of the work that these folks are doing and really trying to, you know, drive this point home, so. So, that was the other super exciting one that I, I attended.
I forgot, I forgot something.
What?
That just reminded me, when you were talking about like the ways in which Highland Park is kind of future-forward and you're really making improvements. The workshop last year, we were honored to present our TGNC policy, our Gender Nonconforming Policy. And of course, policy is different than implementation, like you pointed out, Mark, but I do feel like there are so many different board members, people that I met, that were all well-meaning people, that were completely uneducated and unaware of the difficulties for students that are gender nonconforming or dealing with body dysphoria in any way, really. It was, it was really cool to be able to have conversations with like real tough guys from different places in New Jersey who were very clear that, you know, the plumbing makes your gender. And I was able to talk to them, we had really like productive conversations, and that's the kind of stuff that can happen at workshop, is you're face-to-face talking with people about very, you know, incendiary topics to some degree. But I think that, I really feel strongly that we need to present what we presented last year every single year at workshop. It was a major missing component in this year's agenda. You know, our Bush Law Firm did give the legal side of how to address matters of gender, but it's so much bigger, you know, the conversation is so much more important, and I feel like we don't have time to waste, like we need to have these conversations so that kids are not harmed in the process of growing up in places where they're not cared for. And it's not as if we have figured it out 100%, but what we have to offer is special, that was very clear from what I saw at workshop, and people are willing to listen. So, I would suggest that we do that next year and the following year and forever.
I agree. And actually, I spoke at workshop with a couple of board members from South River, who, based on you and I attending the Middlesex County School Boards Association and presenting on our policy, and then they also came to our presentation at workshop last year, they've adopted our policy, and now they have two students in their district who are using that policy, so...
Oh, my God, that makes me feel so good.
It's huge, and, but it's actually become controversial. They have people coming out to the meetings who are upset, and, but now they have that policy to...
Right. And they have us to refer to.
Exactly, yeah.
You know, they have support. I think we need to make it very clear to the rest of school boards around New Jersey that we are doing our best, we're not doing a perfect job, but here's maybe an example that they might be willing to follow, and we can all help each other.
Yeah.
But it is a conversation that is critical.
No, but it's nice when you get that...
Yeah.
That you see that come full circle.
Yeah, and it's so, it's so great when it's someone that you did not think was interested in learning, you know, guys that remind me of like my dad, you know? They're, they're very open to the idea that they don't know everything, and they're willing to listen, but, you know, having presentations to go to, I think that's kind of the first step for a lot of people.
Yeah, I would be happy to resubmit for next year.
Great.
Okay, does anybody have anything that they want to bring up for all business? No? So, Mark, you wanna touch on the high school schedule?
Yeah, yes, I'd like to, I'll discuss this very briefly. So, at numerous Board of Health meetings, the topic, the topic has come up of the high school schedule, and the fact that we agreed to change the schedule to start later, and a sense that because the first period starts at, I think it's 7:48, that we're really not starting earlier, and because a number of our students are coming in at 7:48, it's not really starting earlier. earlier.
Later, later.
Later, sorry. And the, um, I should have said it is starting, yeah, it is starting, uh, they, the sense that it maybe is starting, um, earlier. Um, and, um, I think I brought this up last time, the, the idea that Mettageon has actually solved the problem, but in fact Mettageon hasn't solved the, the, the problem, if there is a problem. Uh, Mettageon starts earlier than we do and Mettageon ends earlier than we do. And Mettageon shares sports and other extracurriculars with us at the same time that we run the extracurricular. So the extracurricular is the, the, uh, time at the end of the day that we run against so that we can't, we can't, for instance, say, period one is gonna start at 8:45 and period two at 9:45 and we'll end classes at four o'clock. That can't happen because Mettageon hasn't done it and no one has done it and we couldn't run extracurricular, uh, any of our sports if we, we did that, not to mention busing schedules. And busing schedules in the morning are, are an issue. So I've discussed this with the, uh, with the Board of Health, but I felt, um, after talking to Scott, that I should talk to, um, Mr. Lassiter. And I did, I had conversations with him about this and thanks, Scott, for putting us together. One of the things discussed with the Board of Health was perhaps, uh, I could be part of his scheduling committee to, because of my, some of my skills with data and numbers, et cetera, area. But after talking to him, I feel very strongly that he has a very good, um, he has a very, very good handle on it. Uh, he could give me the numbers and tell me who's where and when they're coming and why they're coming and what the programs are. Um, and I think one of the things that had brought this to the attention of the Board of Health this year was, was that the numbers have gone up slightly. I think last year it was 35 or 40% and this year, about 45% of the students come in for period one.
And then period A?
Well, A, I, it's called one in some places, it's called zero in some places. It's the 7:48 period. Um, this, it's up to 45%. The interesting thing about that is the majority of the students who are coming in earlier for that 7:48 period, um, are coming in, uh, the, the difference from last year, majority of them apparently are coming in for Team Pep. And Team Pep is the program that the Board of Health-
Right, right.
-last year talked to me every time, "Why aren't we having Team Pep?" They're right, by the way.
Just to put in perspective.
Yes.
That, uh, Team Pep used to be zero, actual zero period was at seven.
Oh, at seven?
Not 7:48.
I see.
So 7:48 was the first period, but I-
I see.
I also want to clarify, it's about 15 students, but those, but that may-
It's a percentage.
Be significant percentage-wise.
Yes, it's a percentage. And, and there are, there are students who are coming, Mike didn't have the exact number, but it's 50 or 60 students who are coming by bus from Cedar Lane area. And to change that in some way would mean those students couldn't come for, for the 7:48 period, just to be clear what period it is. They couldn't come for the 7:48 period if we ran those buses later, but we'd have to overhaul the whole bus schedule, which is very complex and it would become very expensive. So we're, we, we, we're, there's-
Constraints on both.
Constraints on the front and on the back. And when I heard, when I went over the whole program with, with Mike Lassiter, I'm very confident that, that some of the students are coming in for Team Pep, some are coming in for, um, health and phys ed for different alternatives. Some of the students are coming in, choosing to come in for Study Hall. Some are choosing to come in for courses that are given during the day. Um, and, and, and also in that 7:48 period, some of the students are coming in for choir, band or orchestra where they don't have to get pulled out of class, an academic class now, which they used to have to get pulled out of. So I'm very confident with all the constraints, front, back and middle, that, that he's on top of it and we're doing a good job of what we intended to do when we set this up. And I'm gonna present it to the Board of Health. I think the meeting is on December 6th. Um, and, um, they may not be agreeable. I hope they are, I hope they understand. They've understood in the past, uh, that we're doing, uh, the best that's humanly possible given the busing constraints at the beginning and the extracurricular at the end. But we may get another, um, uh, they may pass another, uh, motion to ask us to do more, do better, or change the program or something. But I feel after talking to him, and I spent a lot of time on this with him, that we are doing the best we can.
And can't we at some point, if, you know, they continue to voice concern, have them come and meet with Mike?
Well, we actually, um, have invited Mike to attend the Board of Health meeting and he's very willing to do that.
He is willing. Well, I'd like to present one more time to them.
Okay.
I think, I think that, um, the, the issue I have is they, they know me pretty well now and, uh, uh, when, so they're willing to talk in front, you know, talk to me and talk in front of me. Uh, Scott came to make this presentation last year and no one said anything. They were very, very, very deferential.
He's very intimidating.
He was very, no, no, he was, they were very, very deferential to him. And it got voiced again a meeting or two later.
Right.
I think if, if Mike Lassiter came, they would be very differen-, you know, wearing a tie and everything. They would be very differential. And then I go and, and I, I get, I get, I hear about it. But I, I wanna, I get beaten up about it.
Are you married to the Board of Health? I think, this sounds like a, like a-
They're, they, I enjoy, I enjoy, I enjoy going there. But they, they, and they're very well-meaning and they're, they're, they're great, but I, I, this, this issue just comes up all the time.
Well, it is, it's, you know.
It's a tough, tough one, but I feel like the school's doing a good job. They have an excellent job, given the constraints.
Thank you for the endorsement.
Really, you, you are.
Awesome. Okay, um, so does anyone else have anything else for new business or any questions for Mark or Scott on the start times? Okay, uh, if not, public comment, last chance, ladies? Nope? Okay, all good? Uh, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.